With liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Correspondence.
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, Mayor has a presentation.
Good evening. We've got a few items on the agenda, but I'd like to reverse the good of the city part and address the recognition of Armando Colarelli and what he's meant to the City of Middletown. First, we have a proclamation, and I'll read the proclamation and designation, and I know the family wants to say a few words also, but the proclamation basically outlines Armando's impact on Middletown. It says, "Whereas Armando Colarelli is awarded the key to the city in recognition of his service to the Middletown community as a long-term business owner, whereas for 44 years, Armando has owned and operated Tailoring by Armando located at 22 North Street in downtown Middletown. Whereas we recognize Armando Colarelli as a valued member of the Middletown community and wish him good luck at his retirement, and whereas Armando's tailor shop will be greatly missed by the City of Middletown, the Downtown Business Improvement District, and the countless number of customers Armando has served throughout the years, now therefore I, Joseph M. DiStefano, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the City of Middletown, New York, do hereby proclaim the day of October 20th, 2020, as Armando's tailor shop day here in the City of Middletown."[126.11][126.11](APPLAUSE). My family opened the business in 1997 in downtown, and Armando was already here for quite a while back then, but as the proclamation said, 44 years in downtown and through the good and the bad, he came in near the end of the good, then survived the bad, and now that we're having our rebirth, a lot of it's attributed to people like Armando. For 44 years, so that means I was 14 years old when he started, no, 16 years old, where am I going? Maybe 18 years old.[171.12][171.12](LAUGHTER). Bad math, but I do know Massey was 88 years old.[174.43][174.43](LAUGHTER). So, but he's been the mainstay, basically the anchor of downtown. When you look at anchors, people talk about big, you know, businesses like the anchor at the mall, J.C. Penney's, or the anchor downtown, Paramount Theater or our library. The anchor of the retail and the consumer business in downtown Middletown has not been any of those. It's been, because none of them have been consistent for 44 years. Armando has. So, he decided this year that the time was to retire, time enough. 44 years doing one thing in one place was about time to hit it, but he's made an impact on our community. So, he decided it's time to say goodbye, and he has done an actual great job of bringing customers in and welcoming customers. Along with his wife, they have made a tremendous impact on our community, and I'd like to bring the two of them up and award Armando, because he was the tailor, but you're an equally part, because you were the front person.[249.48][249.48](LAUGHTER). Let me bring you up, I'm gonna get my mask on. Come on up. So, we want to award you with a proclamation.
Okay.
And hopefully that will be, and just a little symbol of our appreciation.
Thank you very much.
For all you did for the City of Middletown.
Oh, my God, thank you.
Water honor.
Thank you.
And we want to give you the.
Thank you very much.
Say thank you so much to.
Thank you so much.
All you've done and give you an elbow.[284.12][284.12](LAUGHTER).
Yeah, I want to say thank you very much for the City of Middletown to give me this opportunity, honor, and opportunity to be here tonight, and I want to say thank you to my wife. She always been on my side, working hard, and thank you for the all customer that came to me, and I did the best I can in all 44 years, and still I want to say thank you very much to everybody, okay? Thanks.
You're so welcome.[323.89][323.89](APPLAUSE). So, before I bring your children up, just to give you more of a background about Armando, he was born in Italy and began studying sewing in Rome when he was 18 years old. He moved to Middletown in 1967 with Alba, and they joined, Alba joined him in 1968. He worked as a tailor at two downtown department stores, two downtown departments for Robert Hall and Castle Brothers before opening up his own namesake shop in 1976. For a time, Armando also sold suits and rented tuxedos in the storefront next door, and they served customers, as I said, for 44 years until he announces retirement in early 2020. Armando and Alba raised two children in Middletown. They both are, Armando and Alba are Middletown residents also, not only business people here, Fabio and Tina, both of whom still live and work in the area to this day, and they have four grandchildren. So, we'd like to bring up your children, and I know they wanted to say a few words also.
Good evening. First and foremost, I would like to thank the City of Middletown in honoring my father for this special achievement. We're all proud of my father for serving over 40 years in this community as a tailor, a trade that is very important in our society, a trade that is almost lost. On a personal note, we'll always have fond memories of the tailor shop. We were taught about responsibility, work ethic, and also learned how to sew. We thank him for always letting us look our best, whether it was from adjusting a hem on a pair of pants to making a custom suit. His tailoring exemplified the perfection and pride in his work. We wish him all the best and enjoy retirement. We love you.[455.31][455.31](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. I'm Armando's daughter, Tina. We're honored to be here tonight to share in our dad's achievement for being a City of Middletown business owner for over 40 years. Many years ago, our dad came over from Italy in search of a better life. He opened up Armando's tailor shop and has been a staple in downtown Middletown ever since. With his hard work and expertise in his craft, he has built a business that became well-known to the people of the City of Middletown. He built up a loyal clientele with customers coming from all over Orange County just to get tailored by him. Anyone passing by the shop would often be greeted with a smile and a friendly wave. He retained his customers because of the quality of his work and his customer service. Customers knew he took pride in his craft, and they knew he was meticulous and honest. Growing up, there was a sense of pride for my brother and I when we would tell others that our dad was Armando the tailor. Everyone knew who he was. With every stitch that he sewed, he was able to make any piece of clothing look and feel like it was custom-made. The quality of his work was impeccable, and if a customer moved away from the area, they would often still come by the shop just to say hello when they were back in town. Tailors are far and few between, but in our dad, people found someone who truly loved and enjoyed his craft. We are proud that our dad was able to enjoy and carry on his line of work for all of these years. To others, he is known as Armando the tailor, but to us, he's our dad. Thank you for honoring him.[561.79][561.79](APPLAUSE).
That was nice. We also have the opportunity tonight to receive some money from the Run for Downtown organization. Dave and Anna Madden representing the Run for Downtown. I just want to note, Dave and Anna were also an important part of recognizing Armando and Alba for their 44 years in business. Their business is located right across the street for many years, and they did play a big part, and so I wanted to acknowledge their part in this also, along with Maria Bruni, our Executive Director of Economic Development. But Dave and Anna, why don't you come on up, or Dave, whoever you're with, and bring the check.[617.35][617.35](LAUGHTER).
Joe says that that last part was nice, but he's gonna like this part even more, I think.[626.79][626.79](LAUGHTER). So, we missed out on the 2020 version of the Run for Downtown this year, obviously. I mean, everyone understands why. We were excited about it, it was our 15th anniversary, so we put it off for a year. So, that means we're gonna be back August 21st, 2021. We'll be back, we'll be better than ever. I have the committee of organizers behind me. Last couple of years, we haven't donated any money, we've been stockpiling a little bit, and we are proud tonight to present a check to the City of Middletown to be used toward the pavilion in an amount of $60,000. So, thank you.[661.73][661.73](APPLAUSE).
As you know, this project, the Downtown Revitalization Initiative monies, we're doing a lot of work with it, but the pavilion was put on the back burner because of running over budget, basically. We couldn't do everything we thought we could do with the original consulted estimates, but this $60,000 started us thinking about the pavilion again. Maria's been able to find some money within the economic development lines, so we're doing the slab for the pavilion right now. It's gonna be the change order coming in from the contractor due to this money and others. And then we're also hearing some good news from possibly the state on some additional funding that may come down the road, and then we'll be able also to do the pavilion this year as we anticipate. So, we were looking to put it possibly off the next year, but I think we're gonna be able to do it all this year. So, it's all good news, and it all started with your $60,000. So, thank you so much.[732.73][732.73](APPLAUSE). And this is Good News Night, so now we have the recognition day for the Middletown Fire Department. Some of us were at the statue of Fireman Joe, named after me, down at the corner.[755.44][755.44](LAUGHTER). No, chief, it wasn't, I guess. And we had, where they acknowledged the different firemen awards for this year. As you know, we didn't have a parade, we don't have the, we had an inspection night, but there's no, they usually have a picnic of some sort and other things, but due to COVID, we were very much restricted to what activities we had. So, we would like to bring in Chief, bring Chief Lewis up, and he can announce the awards that we're giving out tonight and recognize the members.
There's a lot of members outside.
A lot of members, so maybe we can just take a couple-minute break.
Yes, take a couple-minute break and rotate.
At the statue, we did the awards for Officer of the Year, Fireman of the Year, Rookie of the Year, and from the inspection night, we did the, handed out the trophies. So, I'll start off with Rookie of the Year, Dustin Ryder from Engine One.[816.51][816.51](APPLAUSE). He received a plaque and his certificate as well he got earlier tonight, so, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, chief.
And Fireman of the Year, also relatively new to the department in being an officer, Leighton Williams was, I'm sorry, Fireman of the Year.[847.76][847.76](APPLAUSE). He also received a plaque, a certificate from Newhouse County Exec as well, and from the Fire Department as well, a certificate.
Thank you, chief.[874.32][874.32](APPLAUSE).
And the guy that has kept me in check, other than this guy, Bill Keldar, Officer of the Year, a lot of purchasing this year, as I said, back at the statue told me what I could do and what I could not do, and kept me in line and kept the office in line, so he also received a clock and also a certificate from Newhouse and from the department as well.[918.44][918.44](APPLAUSE). And from our inspection night, Apparatus was Engine Four, took first place, Engine One took second place in Apparatus. Companies Truck Three took first place, Truck One took second place, and the overall company with the combined scores of Apparatus in the company was Engine Four.[956.13][956.13](APPLAUSE).
Okay, for the good of the city, anyone else like to come up and address the council? Here are none. Okay, remarks to the mayor.
I have nothing yet.
Any question for the mayor? Okay, remarks to the department head, Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. I too want to wish Armando successful retirement, and it's been an honor to know him. I'm a daughter of a tailor, and I grew up in that life, and it is fulfilling and rewarding work, and I'm going to miss Armando's smile and wave like his sunset right there in the corner of King and North, and, you know, tailors, growing up, we were all family. So, it's, again, I want to wish him and his family best of luck, and we'll miss them there. Also, we're gonna be closing on the Wickham Avenue property this Friday, so we're gonna have a brand-new homeowner, proud homeowner, moving in on this weekend. So, our next home that we're working on is 198 Wickham, if you guys are driving around and you see all the siding going up and everything, so, and we do have a buyer, we should be going into contract in the next couple of weeks on that property. Also, this Friday, we're gonna have a ribbon-cutting for a new business on North Street, and at 19 North Street, Las Albus, you might have read about them when the Times-Hall Record did a story. They're a design company that repurposes military uniforms into fashion. So, the fashion and sewing and all that good stuff is gonna continue on North Street, so it's good to see. And we have a couple more businesses on North Street that are opened or are opening in the field of fashion and design, so we look forward to all that. And that's all I have for this evening, unless you have any questions.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Fire chief.
Good evening. For, and I'm not gonna beat you up tonight, but I will say (LAUGHTER), the map, the water map, has been hung in the control room.
You're not color-coded.
Color-coded with the mains, so it's much easier to read, and I hung it myself, so I know what's up. We do have two resolutions tonight. One transfers within the department, and then the resolution on the requirements for Chief Engineer, and we all know my feelings on that.
Any question for the fire chief? Chief, thank you for the taking care of the water one. I really appreciate it, and I know the guys do, too. Thank you, chief. Police chief.
Good evening. I actually have nothing this evening unless you have anything for me.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening. It's nice to hear all the positive news and all the positive things going on. I do want to add one thing to that, our celebrations, I want to give a little shout-out to our 13-and-under Little League team that won the District 19. You know, Little League was modified this year like our entire world. I have to give the Volunteers of Little League a lot of credit, they ran a safe league for the kids to participate in and also surrounding towns to come and participate in, and congratulations to that 13-and-under boys team for winning the District 19. Last Friday, there was a ribbon-cutting at the recreation campus, I know a lot of you were there, Senator Mitzer was there, and we thank her again for the funds that we received to make an incredible home for the Recreation and Parks Department as well as the Police Academy. We can't get better neighbors, it's gonna be a win-win situation, and we're gonna have incredible programming up there, even with COVID, we're getting things done. This Thursday, a lot of you received an email, we're gonna be doing a short dedication for Dave Bechtel. We've made a nice little seating area up at the new facility with a bench and a new tree and a plaque, and that'll be at 4 o'clock on Thursday at the recreation campus, a gentleman that is greatly, greatly missed. Lastly, just up at the reservoir, we have expanded four more parking lots, there were small lots up there, we are literally in the tens of thousands of people that have walked that. The Orange Trail, a portion of that was finished up today, we'll have markers on that, so on that map, it said Future Trail, so half of it's done, we'll have the other half hopefully done by next week. What that will also create is for the winter, we're getting a lot of calls, and this is really for the public, about cross-country skiing. That reservoir is gonna be used as much in the winter as it's used now. We are gonna have a loop up in the back, we're letting people know, the black trail, that will be plowed, so it'll be great for workers, because the water department, DPW, need to get to the dams. So, they'll still be walking in there in the winter, as well in the back, where you can do snowshoeing and cross-country skiing, and anybody that wants more information on that, we will put out a specific map for that at each one of the kiosses, so there'll still be that as well. And any questions, anybody can call. And that's all we have tonight, we're getting our winter programming now as much as we can and as safely as we can, just check our social media and our, the website to register or any questions, give us a call.
Do we have an update on Wolf Slayer Park?
I know, I think Jacob could probably give you a little more, I know the contracts were signed going into bid to get the drainage done, the capping of it done, and run the rough wiring underneath.
Any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. Alderman, mercy, the reservoirs.[1382.83][1382.83](LAUGHTER). Reservoirs at 87%. Two weeks ago, I said 89%, so we're dropping. It's been very dry, other communities around us are really suffering, especially the ones using the wells for groundwater, for water sources. So, we need more water, and hopefully rain will come soon, but we're still relatively in good shape, 87%, we're still in very good shape. Leaf pickup, just reminder for the public, it's gonna start November 2nd and will end December 4th. The system is gonna be, we're gonna start with the second ward, because usually we rotate them, so we're gonna start this year, second ward first, third, fourth, and then first. First will be the last one to pick up, so please be ready, you know, put your leaves out there, not before, just maybe the weekend before or the day before, we go around to pick up in there, and keep it four foot from the curb or from the edge of the asphalt, please, because otherwise it'll become hazardous and it becomes dangerous for the kids, for everyone, and keep it away from the intersection. We'll be there as soon as we can. Electronics drop-off, meaning microwaves, TVs, computers, monitors, cell phones, they will be accepted at DPW Garage on Manhattan Avenue, and that will be this Saturday, so you can bring up to five items. There was a commercial, there was an ad taken by the DPW in the paper, and it's on our website, it appeared on Mondays, I believe, yesterday's, yeah, it was yesterday's newspaper article, that's where we purchased the ad. And so, that's the leaves and the electronic drop-offs. You can see the parking lots, they're being constructed, hopefully the second phase of that parking lot, James Street Parking Lot will be opened in two weeks. The paving is getting done, and then the landscaping will be in good shape. They're making major progress in here by the brewery behind City Hall. Finished water lines in the air project, it's a $3.5 million project, construction will start October, right now targeted for October 26. We're gonna start with the 12-inch water line which runs through the park, we want to abandon it so that when the park, Davish Park Expansion, when that takes place, the 12-inch water line that runs through the park will be out of the way, we don't have to worry about it breaking in the middle after the field is constructed or anything like that, so we're gonna be running along the edge of the park, so that will be starting on October 26. And to update Alderman about the construction, the electric, the electric contract has been signed for that, the park expansion. The general contractor is having an issue with the legal language in the contract, and their attorney is talking to our attorney to try to resolve it, hopefully it will be resolved very soon so they can get started. Otherwise, the electrician here, Rutolo, he's local, he signed the contracts and gave it to us a couple of weeks ago, it's no problem for him, we're just waiting for the GC to resolve any legal, all the legal concerns he may have, and that will do it.
So, the electrical contract is signed.
Yes.
But not the general contract?
Yes.
No work has been started?
No, it can't start until the contract is signed.
We open the contracts, we open the bids in August, correct?
We open the bids, I don't remember, it hasn't been 45 days yet.
Okay, so, September?
What?
We opened the bids in September?
I don't know, I don't have the calendar in front of me.
Okay, I guess I'll start asking every two weeks.
It's a legal, it's a legal issue, trying to resolve it between the attorneys.
Aldman Kleiner.
The project architect.
Commissioner, you didn't, two things, one, the time for the electronic drop-off, is it nine to three?
I thought it was eight.
It's eight o'clock.
Eight, it's eight.
Yeah, eight until, John?
I think it's eight till three.
Yeah, eight till three, yes.
It's on the website.
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to let people know while we're talking about it.
Yeah, the mayor said, reminded me that the hazardous waste drop-off at the county
That's nine to three.
Transfer station, I'm sorry, yeah.
That is nine to three, yeah.
And that's also on our website, the county hazardous disposal, so, yeah, eight till three, our electronics.
Okay, very good. I also wanted to thank you, we had a constituent concern about the handicapped entrance to the Police Department, City Hall, and the court, and thank you, Commissioner, because they moved very quickly on that, and that's the first thing to open from the construction there, so it is in place and it is open, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. They were waiting for the wall to be put up so they can, yeah.
Okay.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Aldman Burr?
I'm sorry.
Do you have to bring, any identification when you drop off your electronics?
Any what?
Any identification.
Yes, you have to be City of Middletown resident, yes, thank you for reminding me, absolutely. You have to show a form of ID to prove that you are City of Middletown resident. It's not open for everybody in Orange County, five items maximum.
Okay, thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
City clerk.
Just a reminder that the next meeting will be November 2nd instead of November 3rd, because November 3rd is Election Day, that was voted and changed last week, I put it all on the website. And also, again, early voting starts this Saturday at the Senior Center, please check our website, it's going for like 11 days through a week and a couple days, but all the day, times are different on all the days, so please just check the website or the Board of Elections website, too. Thank you.
Any question for John? Thank you, John. Public hearings and grievances.
Tonight, we have two public hearings. One is to increase the minimum size of certain dwelling units in the DMU zone. I'll read the notice. Notice of public hearing is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 20th, on as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, 2nd Floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the To hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning addition to the DMU zone. To increase in the minimum size of certain dwelling units in the DMU Zone District. The complete proposed change to the DMU zoning district was available in the office of the Common Council Clerk, City Hall, 16 James G., Room 12, and also on the city website. This was published in the Times Held Record on October 9th and October 10th and the city website.
At this time, the public hearing is open?
Yeah, the request is coming through my office. This was originally discussed when we created the DMU. And the idea behind it is to address some of the larger factories, especially or some of the larger conversions, and to make sure that we're not adding small units, that we feel we have an appropriate mix in downtown. And we need more market rate housing. And the market rate seems to be the 750, 800 square foot unit. So we're, we're asking that the, within the DMU, the minimum square footage for a one-bedroom be 750, for a two-bedroom be 850, and then follow the, the bulk, the bulk regulations from there on. But the DMU zone is, we also have another resolution on, I believe there's another public hearing on, on a matter related to that. That's, that's not really a housing issue. But in regards to the, the conversions, we'd like to, from our planning perspective, we'd like to see 750 minimum for one-bedroom unit. Any questions?
Anyone from the public have any questions? Anyone on the council have any questions? I got a motion to close the meeting. Minister Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
The second public hearing is for a zoning change for 40 to 42 Mill Street from a I-1 to a DMU zone. I'll read the notice of the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 20th. On as near 8:00 PM as possible, Common Council Chamber, 2nd floor, 16 James Street. To hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning change from a I-1 zone to a DMU Downtown Mixed Use District for the following property, which was 40 to 42 Mill Street. And its SBL is 30-114. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed zoning change. The complete proposed change application to the zone is available into the office of the Common Council Clerk, City Hall, 16 James G., Room 12. And this is all also published on October 9th and 10th and also on the city website. And for the record, we did receive the proof of mailings for this zone change.
At this time, the public hearing is now open?
Yeah, this is also a request from my office, working with Economic Development Office. Where, when we created the DMU zone, we had it on a much smaller basis and we've looked to expand the boundaries or to define the ultimate boundaries of the DMU. One area that we were, we've been considering how to handle the zoning has been this corner of Monhegan and Mills and Fulton. It's a smaller piece, zoned industrial. We've had many inquiries, mostly housing-related inquiries, which were not attractive to us because we always felt it was part of the downtown. So we felt the best use would be to, best use of the property would be to include it, make that the entry point for the downtown business district in that area. We also have another one coming to you, we've discussed in the past, would be over by Tony's Restaurant. Where we've been meeting with the business owners and property owners over there. And with the trail coming in, that would also be the gateway to a downtown, to our downtown. So there is a project coming behind this. Once the DMU is changed, it's a very favorable project, fits in downtown, but it cannot be done in the industrial zone that's there. We also don't want to change the zoning to a commercial zone that would allow for residential development because we don't think it blends in. Upper floor residential is adequate and fits the bill, but the first floor residential, we're looking to keep commercial. So we need to make the change there. You know, the other boundaries that we've identified are basically Union Street on that side and the Park Circle area, the Wickham Avenue corridor coming into town. So those are areas that, once we finalize this DMU, we'll be, we'll be able to market things a little bit better for what we're looking for in our downtown. But the, this here is industrial on a small piece, small parcel like this doesn't fit and is not conducive to rehabbing those buildings. And the buildings are deteriorating. So if we don't do something, we're going to have a problem there, but a bigger problem. But what you're going to hear about the project is it's a very sound project and the Planning Board will be addressing that after the, after the DMU approval.
At this time, the public hearing is open. Anyone from the public? Just, Mayor, just two buildings on that property, right? And only part of the first floor is going to be commercial?
No, all the first floor has to be commercial. All first floor has to be commercial, upper floor.
Both buildings?
Yes, yes. The only, the only exception to first floor residential would be on a building that doesn't have 30,000 square feet or doesn't have street access. In this case, the buildings have street access. They're both, they have frontage on streets. So they're not hidden. Like the only building that we felt qualified for first floor residential under that specifications were Montgomery Street, the building in the back, Sal Vasapello's project. I think the plan here is to have maybe two apartments upstairs and the rest is commercial.
Any council members? Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. All in favor of the close?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Tobin.
I'd like to congratulate Armando on his retirement and thank the Run for Downtown Committee for the generous donation. I'd also like to congratulate my cousin, Arthur Tobin, who is taking over as postmaster at the post office. I've already talked to him. He's interested in addressing a lot of the concerns that he's been hearing and he, I spoke to him about some of the concerns we have in the fourth ward, Alderman, John Francois, myself. So I wish him the best of luck. Thank you.
Do you have a number? Alderman Green?
Thank you. I too want to congratulate Armando. Forty-four years is no short amount of time and, and you know, it's definitely a mainstay, excuse me, in the downtown, downtown area. Also thank you to Run for Downtown. That is definitely an amazing check to be given us and I'm really looking forward to that pavilion getting done. And also just a congratulations to all the companies and all the, all the members of the Fire Department for all the hard work they put in for the inspection night. Not only that, but also just for all the hard work they put in during the pandemic. You know, it certainly is not an easy job to do any day, but when you're concerned about other health issues as well, I know it, it really puts a burden on you. So certainly for all our first responders, thank you, but tonight especially, we're congratulating and, and thanking the Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. The mayor wanted me to remind the public that there are rights to the polls available for early voting. So please confer with the website or the mayor's office. For Armando, what could be better than to hear your life through the eyes and ears of your children? I thought that was pretty remarkable. Dave and Anna, resume just grows and grows and grows. Thank you for that. And Fire Department, I concur with Alderman Green. Thank you to the, those who are being recognized as well as all of you. I want to make a very brief, moderately self-serving public announcement. If you're a pet owner, you may be wondering when veterinarians are going to let you in their offices or our offices. We are actually working under a directive from the Governor's Office for only allowing people in when it's not possible to not allow them in. So that's going to concur till the end of the year. There's only one exception. If you're unfortunate enough to have to have your pet put to sleep, the directive says you can enter with one member of the family. So we're still working under that. And when winter comes, we'll see how curbside works. It may not really be that good for the veterinary staff. But why are we not doing it? Because the governor says you really shouldn't be doing it. I do want to acknowledge the school board meeting that took place recently. To say it was brutal would be an understatement. Having sat in the president's seat for six years of my 17 at the board, I certainly could feel for Pastor Williams. Harsh words were exchanged. The meeting did get out of control and nobody would disagree with that. There was a heated discussion. The board was chastised as well as the superintendent. Much of that discussion revolved around racism and discrimination. Most of the people who spoke at the mic left right after they finished speaking from the mic. But the board did go around the table and they did pass a pretty lengthy resolution addressing issues of both racism and discrimination. I think they're doing the very best job that anybody could do. I think Pastor ran the meeting the best that anybody could do. And I think if you know anybody on the board, they could probably use a little bit of a word of encouragement at this time. So I certainly reached out to Pastor and I wish them well as they move forward into that particular discussion. Thank you.
Alderman Cuthbert?
I, for Armando and his family, I just have to say congratulations on your retirement. And I'd like to thank you on behalf of this community for your service, everyone here for 44 years. That's remarkable. And your children really honored you very well tonight. It was, it was beautiful and I just, I'm glad that you got to experience that. For a bit of business, the third ward meeting is next Tuesday, the 27th. Difference this month, we are going to be having at the Bob Isick Pavilion at Maple Hill Park for the last time for 2020, but it's going to be at 6:00 PM so it doesn't get too cold or too dark on us. So that's for next week. If you'd like to come, I try to make refreshments, so that's out there. The rec center ribbon cutting we went to was amazing. I just wanted to say that real quickly. I saw the building in process and seeing the building now, it's absolutely outstanding. Great work was done both in-house and, and all around up there at the campus. And I'm excited for the youth and everyone in really the community who gets to use that. The boxing ring looked great. Alderman Massey left before we could make sure it was fully functional, but maybe next time. That's all I have.
Alderman Kleiner? You don't want me to respond. I know you don't. Right, Alderman Kleiner?
That's a tough act to follow. I, I still think of Armando as a newcomer, but you know, 44 years in town, I, I think that qualifies for life's work and congratulations to him and he has been an anchor downtown. Certainly thank Run for Downtown, $50,000 boost to our downtown development is quite a shot in the arm. So I thank them. I congratulate the Fire Department on their awards. As the mayor said, the volunteers in Middletown are a system. It's been so important to what we do and who we are, and it's been such a huge help. So we're always indebted and owe them great, a great lot of gratitude. So I thank them and congratulate them. Jacob, I hope they start picking up the leaves on time because we've got a lot of them out in the street already. So we're ready to go on the second and I hope we don't get any snow. We recognize one anniversary, this, the 24th, we have two, you know, the electronics pickup and the hazardous waste, or drop off and hazardous waste drop off. But October 24th is also seventy-nine, 75 years since the United Nations began its operations. And you know, after World War II, it was the hope of the world that we would be able to work together as a community of nations and solve problems. And we're trying, but oh my goodness, the election's coming up in two weeks. And I, I just, because we have to, I just want to mention the voter suppression. I mean, I did, I am old enough that I did march and I did, was out in the streets and I was in DC for the Voting Rights Act. And that was so important. And now with the kind of voter suppression we see, we're in Texas, you know, Bayer County, 2 million people, Dallas County, 2.5 million people, Harris County with Houston, 4 and 1/2 million people, they're only allowed one drop box per county. One, for 4 and 1/2 million people. I don't know what else you call that besides voter suppression. So I, I hope we get through this. I'm sure you all know how I feel. I also am very disappointed that there still is no local government funding. Our county has been very quiet. No one's really speaking out about what's going on in Washington and how they just said let the states and cities go bankrupt. It's not a good solution. So important, important election coming up. I heard from home mentioning that people with the warming station knew in March that it was going to be moved to the temple. And that's, I'll be kind and say that that's just not true. But I'll tell you that in the minutes from the June 16th, June, that's three months later, was the first time that the rabbi even said, well, we have a big basement room at the temple, maybe I'll look into that. That was the first time. So that's not March. No one was hiding this and I just wanted to clear that up on the record. And other than that, I'd say happy and safe Halloween. Enjoy the full moon and the blue moon and I hope it's a good night. Thank you.
Alderman John Francois?
Thank you. Our Fire Department, I always enjoy the Fire Safety Night. It's, it's amazing to see how our Fire Department, how they, these guys live in the Fire Department and, and it's always a good thing to visit every Fire Department to see how these guys operate and the sacrifice that they made, sleeping there for long hours away from their family. I just want to thank them for all the hard work and dedications that they serve this community. Thank you.
Alderman Burr?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the Fire Department on all their awards tonight. And I would like to thank the Madden and the Run for Downtown for the generous donation. And Armando, 44 years. I know this, I know the feeling. I'm, I'm at 43 right now myself. I'm hoping maybe I can retire at 44, but we'll see. Thank you.
New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to increase the minimum size of certain dwelling units in the DMU zoning district.
Resolution possible Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kazun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to exempt the City of Middletown from certain real estate taxes on land solely devoted to public use as part of the City of Middletown watershed for 2022.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kazun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to amend Chapter 344, Parades and Motorcades.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kazun. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kazun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize a treasurer to transfer a total of $33,500 within the Fire Department 2020 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kazun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Kazun to authorize a treasurer to transfer a total of $55,000 from the sewer fund balance to cover the anticipated cost for this year and next year IPP program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kazun, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kazun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to add to the code of the City of Middletown a new chapter 169 entitled All-Terrain Vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kazun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to amend the requirements for candidates for the Fire Department election of chief engineer.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Tobin.
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois to amend the requirements for candidates for the Fire Department election of chief engineer.
Resolution possible, Aldman John Francois, seconded by Aldman Tobin. Any discussion? Aldman Green?
I just want to state that I'll be abstaining as a delegate from one of the companies this year. Thank you.
Aldman Johnson?
I guess I also need to acknowledge, I discussed it in committee, I didn't really find the information that was presented to me sufficiently cogent to move forward, and I feel compelled to abstain from this vote as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll.
Graham Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Abstain.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Abstain.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to award the bid for asbestos abatement and demolition of 7 Canal Street, 42 West Main Street, and 47 Sprout Street.
Resolution possible, Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion?
Sorry, he wants me to clarify, the mayor, this is only to award the inspection and air testing during the demolition. Demolition contracts have been awarded already, and the contracts have been signed.
Just for asbestos abatement?
Yes, for the three, three prop, yeah, asbestos abatement monitoring.
Monitoring?
Yes, monitoring the air, yes.
Not to a beat?
Through the property.
Already in the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, the actual abatement is in the, we signed the contracts already. It's my fault, I gave it to John at the last minute.
It's right here in your email.
What?
Bidding for asbestos abatement and demolition.
Can you read the rest of it?
Sure. Work requires specialty asbestos monitoring and air sampling as well, variances, applications. Do you want me to read all this?
Yeah, I just, I don't make mistakes. I just want to...
Let the record reflect that. Here we go.